And good evening. Today is July the 2nd. Right now it is 7:34 and I'm calling to order this evening's meeting of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. For the benefit of those who have not participated in a planning and zoning commission meeting, our procedures are as follows. The secretary will read the legal notice of the meeting as published in local newspapers. The applicant will be invited to come forward and present the case, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested of this property. Comments of town agencies will be read for each application if there are any. First, there'll be clarifying questions from the commissioners, then there'll be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Next, we'll ask those who want to support the application to come forward, and second, we'll ask the opposing, those opposing the application to come forward. As this is a public meeting and must be recorded, it'll be necessary for speakers to identify themselves by stating their name and address before addressing the commission. The applicant will then be free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and the regular meeting during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision, and the commission has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Decisions of the meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the planning and zoning office at (203) 453-8039 after 9:00 a.m. See that tonight are the following members of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. We have Walter Corvier, I'm Rich Meyer, we have Josh Hershman, Frank DeAndrea, and Richard Wallace, we have George Crowell, Reggie Reed, and Katie Arbucklestaff, and tonight we have Shannon Gale videotaping us. Ordinarily, we would read the public notice, but we do not have anything before us that needs to be noticed. We did have an application for a special permit for retail sale of alcohol. It is Patel Cerica, 2346 Boston Post Road Map, 78 lot 14, Zone TS2. It has been tabled because there was an error in the notice to the neighbors that'll appear before us in the meeting next week. So, we're gonna start-
Two weeks.
Two weeks, right.
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
August 6th.
I recommend you continue the hearing to August 6th.
We'll continue that hearing until August 6th. Very good. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the regular meeting?
So-
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. So, Mr. Patel is out-
On continuation, you should probably have a motion and a vote on that.
Oh, you're right, we should have a motion. Would someone like to make a motion to continue it?
I'd make a motion to continue till the August-
Second?
Second.
Sixth.
Sixth meeting.
August 6th.
Second.
Oh, sixth.
Frank, second. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Next up, we have the subdivision, Andrews Ridge, Section 1, Lot 2, revision to subdivision driveway through the conservation easement. And is Eric doing this one? Got to you quick tonight. Now Eric, this is an after the fact application. This is an after the fact application.
Yes. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
That's it? That's great. Thanks, Josh.
One thing that Kevin's kind of alluded to or suggests or is implied. This was, this subdivision was created during the time period when we first started to deploy or employ this conservation easement language, and it was before we were really very conscientious about making sure that the conservation easements were actually filed in the land records, and so as a consequence, this is one of those developments where that did not occur.
Do you know why it wasn't filed on the land records?
We just didn't really have an administrative procedure to follow up and make sure that that was, that was gonna be done.
What is the downside of having this there? I mean, obviously, some of the construction, the trees are gone in that one spot.
Right.
Is that it?
That's it.
Have you, you've seen the area, of course, and it doesn't look any different than, you know, because they described it as a scenic highway, that strip of land. Yeah, as you drive up and down Route 77 to go past there, you still see the woods, it's just now that there's a driveway into the woods. And out of the 230-foot frontage, 200 feet of it is still wooded, and as suggested by Kevin's memo, it's proved what we learned out. Right, and there's no letter from Dennis Johnson who got it accepted, because that was something else that was mentioned?
There isn't a house there yet.
So then, okay.
Another slight clarification on Kevin's memo. He asked that this conservation easement be filed in the land records for lots 1, 2, and 3. The applicant here does not own lots 1 and 3, so he will not, they will, he won't, he can't cause that to be filed. He has to, he has to suggest to those owners that they do it.
So what happens if they say no?
Then it won't be, it won't be done.
So then potentially somewhere down the road, they could say, "Oh, you know what? I'd like to have a driveway too," since he has-
Well, they already have driveway. They're already, those lots are already built.
Right, their driveway goes to 77?
I think one does.
Okay, the driveway to lot 4 comes in off 10th Lane.
The 1 and 3.
And is quite a ways, quite a ways away from Route 77, so they already have something nothing. They've been building a lot of driveways with their property in name.
Right.
And lot number 3, his house is up in here, served directly for him from 10th Lane. He's one of those that has a blacktop driveway, a lot of the landscaping and everything. And his whole area from right about here, all the way to Route 77, is quite a shelter and is all covered in woods. Isn't this just a mistake to deed sort of file them? Why can't we just have the developer file one that they should have?
That's what we, that's what we wanted to do. That's one of the conditions, that's the condition that Kevin's recommending.
So you don't have to give them all of those?
Well, no, he doesn't, we can't on lots, the other lots, he doesn't have any authority.
No, I said, but was that an original condition of the developer?
No, only that, only, the only condition, if the buzzer condition was that the easement be shown on the subdivision map.
Right, and you know, they're pointing out that it's-
We don't do it that way now. We require that easement be filed before building permits are issued or some other kind of mechanism like that.
Right, and they're pointing out that it's a scenic highway, but I think I remember from my time on the Conservation Commission that that doesn't really mean anything. It just means that someone said it's a scenic highway.
Well, it's a state, because the state process, it creates, the state designates it a scenic highway, and then there's some certain, for the, if more improvements are made by the state, like widening and things like that, the state has to hold a hearing to consider the impact on scenic characteristics, but it doesn't have any impact on private property.
Got you. So, so really, I mean, what is this actually gonna hurt? He has a driveway, like every other homeowner at 77 has a driveway, so I'm having, I'm not seeing a problem. Anyone else having a problem?
I just don't know where the right of way is for lot 2 if you hadn't crossed the conservation-
Back here.
No, that's, that's, that's sort of the one you're forcing up there.
Right.
So this is a much bigger hassle for the property, and it lowers its value if someone were to be building a driveway over the right of way.
For these people too.
Yeah, there currently is a driveway here that comes into this lot, and it's currently paved here, so construction traffic coming in, making this turn, coming this way in, obviously, depending on where you're here.
So-
And this, really, for the orientation of the house, this gets a better exit.
So, by building this in violation of the conservation easement without a permit, you've increased the value of the property significantly, right?
It depends on whether someone wants to be a part of a subdivision of nice homes, or wants to have their own driveway, their own property, or something. It's a matter of personal preference.
But the personal preference of having a driveway off onto 77 increases the value of the property because people tend to have those preferences.
Well, I guess it would be-
It could, but like I say, if someone, a lot of people now want to be in some reason, about some reason, and we're having their driveway on Route 77, they are not part of the-
Well, yeah, but to Walter's point, if the driveway went here and the house was situated towards the cul-de-sac, it would be an interior lot and back of lot number 4, it would be in back of someone else's house, but this way, it's right on the road, right? Like, if the house was facing that way, there's someone's house here and there's someone's house here, so it would be an interior lot.
So, so this house right now is the cul-de-sac.
Right, so, so this transformed this lot from being an interior lot from the cul-de-sac to being on Route 77, and you're right, you know, it depends. If you want to be on Route 77 and you want to live on Route 77, then that's great.
It's a matter of personal preference.
Yep. What do you think, Walter?
So the personal preference has no, no economic impact?
Right, but even if it did?
So, I have, I've designed a lot of subdivisions in town here, in area towns, and I know that being in a subdivision is the most valuable lot. Being on a state highway, regular on a state highway is not, but then there are people who, so that's why I, I don't know how to answer your question.
I would argue residential.
It's personal preference.
Residential off the main road, I don't think would be beneficial. Commercial, yes.
Right. I'm just not that concerned about the actual easement or about the scenic aspects of the road, so I'm fine with that.
You're okay? Richard?
I'm fine.
Frank?
Josh?
So, someone want to make a motion?
Please, excuse me.
Oh, you have questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, please.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah?
My name's Elizabeth Hill, and I own property at 1876 Durham Road, right across the street from this property. The driveway at my house is directly across from that driveway, by our big apartment. And when this development was first proposed, there was an easement, a 75-foot easement as part of that, and also a land trust property not too far from that easement. So my concerns are that this is in violation of that knowledge, that there was an easement there, and this driveway should not be there. It cuts into the state highway, the scenic highway, it's right across from my driveway. I'm concerned about the water from that driveway going into my driveway, which is lower, and a drainage problem, and there's no catch basin right near that, that area.
What is?
So I'm concerned about that, and it also has, you make me think that the scenic part has not been disrupted, but it has been disrupted from my point of view, from my house. And there's designated wetland close to that, that I'm concerned that maybe there, that might be disturbed, or there might be an issue with that wetland, part of the land trust. So those are my main issues, and I think the biggest thing was it's after the fact, and that it's allowed to happen, that the town has allowed this to happen, is a very deep concern for me, and that the tree, all the trees are taken down along the road there.
How long, how long ago was the driveway put in, about?
Not too long ago.
So you haven't noticed the effects yet?
No, no, not yet, and not when the tree, the leaves are off the trees, they will be issued also. But it is an issue that is right directly across from-
But is it runoff, has it runoff, the rainwater runoff currently?
No, not yet, but I foresee it when there's, it's all paved.
Okay.
And there's no, there's no trees there at the bottom from that easement to catch any rainfall that happens. And that the original driveway, I don't know why they can't use that original driveway instead of going out, because if it goes out onto 77, then it's not considered part of that development. Those are my big concerns, for, not just me, I'm here tonight kind of representing the family.
Unfortunately, you do understand that although they were required to have this easement and they put it in there, in their development plan, it was never filed on the land record.
And that's not my fault.
No, I understand that.
Yes.
So, okay, from that sort of perspective, they didn't really violate, you know, the land, well, it's currently on the land records.
But it's on the maps.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yes.
So if you, they were to go to the land record to see if they had a conservation easement there, I don't know, are these the original owners of the, of the property? Did they buy it from the sub developer? No, no, that's the original developer. Oh, that's the original developer, so he would have full knowledge. Okay.
Reggie, are we mere of what number do you?
For one thing, the driveway isn't straight in, it is curved. It is on a hill, but there are, there's some engineering can be done to it to make sure that the water has a cascade off and stays on that side of Route 77 and doesn't go across the road.
Are you talking like a drain or-
It's called taking care of engineering.
And what form would that, what form would that take for, for us if we were to make a-
Well, you'd require the, consult their engineer to ensure that the water from the driveway gets deposited down at the bottom of 77 and not flow across the road. They can take, they can create rain garden to catch the water, they can create some water bars. There are various engineering techniques that they can employ.
And this is not in a wetland review area?
No, it's almost 400 feet from the wetland.
Okay, so that's outside of the wetland.
Yeah, yes.
Frank, questions?
The water issue with the driveway, that is something that the state in reviewing this plan, if it's approved, will require that the water be contained of those comfortable highways. This is part of what they will be requiring, so the town, town engineer, nobody really has to be concerned with what's happening with the driveway water because the state will be addressing that.
I'd still-
Their lungs aren't.
I, I got it, but I, as much as I'd love to say to Connecticut, I think that they're great, and they never drop the ball, ever. I still would want to have something on our approval, if there is one. I would like to have some, some oversight on our side. Walter, you have qualifying questions?
Just, we skipped questions from the public. I think that that might be it.
Yeah, oh, so, alright, any?
Well, the drainage is my only problem.
Yeah, so your concerns, the drainage, the wetlands issue, and then the scenic-
Well, that it has cut into the easement, cut down the trees.
So if we were to create a slightly larger conservation easement further back to offset the area that they disturb-
I'm struggling hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, if, if we were to say to them, "Look, you know, you disturb 1,600 feet of conservation easement, would you make the conservation easement larger on some other part of the property with that?"
No.
That wouldn't make you feel better?
No.
No?
It's after the fact, and I do believe that this person knew that there was an easement there, and it's not right.
Is there anything short of, short of tearing up the driveway and putting the trees back that, that you think would be appropriate or would, would satisfy the intent for this year?
Well, I don't know, that's my decision. Isn't that your decision?
Right, it is.
Oh, it is, yeah.
We're hoping for your input, but, yeah.
Yes, I think it should be put back the way it was.
Just tear it up and add trees.
And that the original driveway in the back should be part of that original thing.
Okay.
And it is 77, it's very busy, it's very noisy, and people come tearing up that curb, and that's just, that's not as legal as it is.
There are no sight distance problems. 77, where this driveway was in, is a few hundred feet north of the subdivision that was in, the same side. Coming from the north is quite a sight distance.
And the drive comes within two feet of the property line?
Excuse me?
The driveway comes within two feet of the property line?
It's about four feet there.
Tough one. Any insight, gentlemen?
George, this happened on?
Conserva, violations of conservation easements do happen from time to time, yes, even when they are properly recorded in the land records. Usually homeowners, you know, they don't, you know, homeowners don't look at the land records, they, and it's usually they clear trees, you know, where they want to, or a yard, that sort of thing, that's not uncommon.
What is the, this line, the line to, at the, at the border of the conservation easement, I'm just confused about where it sits. We've got the-
This is the, this is the edge of the easement here.
Correct, and it doesn't seem to have GPS like the other lines.
Oh, now it's just the 75-foot parallel to that.
Just 75. 75-foot parallel to this line is the way it's written.
Does anyone else have some comments that'll help us, guidance?
George, and what way do, does the town usually, do we usually require them to replant the trees, or what do we usually do?
What is your, what is your question exactly?
Well, of course, it's the commission's decision. As you astutely pointed out, the easement is not recorded in the land records. If it were, it would say that the town of Guilford has the right to enforce the easement. Right now, the land belonged to the developer. As you saw, Mr. Anderson said he thought he could have another driveway onto Route 77.
Reg?
When they do cut into an easement, just to cut trees down, we require that they replant trees, obviously not as large as the ones that were cut, and if we can't save the under story, we do that too, but in this case, this is a driveway that was-
And is that one as a recorded deed?
Yes.
You require easement, you require them to do that?
Yes.
So Reggie, the, this is, this was done by the original developer?
Correct.
The developer came here and was told through his approval that there is a conservation easement, so we want to convince ourselves that he forgot.
Well, I- You didn't forget. Fortunately, you didn't file it.
Yeah, but, so what, Brandon?
What is it? What, here's, here's what it says from Eric. The area, "An area was cleared for driveway, thinking that one driveway access was allowed as long as the remainder of the easement was left intact." So, it was a mistake.
Reggie and George, do we have the authority to do anything right now such as order the driveway out and the trees back in? Is that within the realm of what we can do, given the fact that it wasn't recorded in the land deed, or do we have to just say okay?
And then make them record that he's gonna not allow anyone else going forward to do this?
Well, not, not really consider it, you know?
Right.
Because I-
Because that's, there's another alternative that just sort of occurred to me, is that you approve this incursion, but you require that the developer make some kind of contribution to the town's land acquisition fund. That wouldn't benefit the specific person affected, but that's a possible remedy.
That's great.
Whether you have the authority to not approve this, I would say you do.
We do have the authority not to approve it, and if we were to give him the option of making a contribution to the land conservation trust in the amount of, say, $750,000, that would be within our authority?
I think that'd probably be stretching the, stretching it, yeah.
What would be the limit?
What would be the appropriate amount of damages?
Yeah.
$10,000.
$10,000? Oh, come on. $10,000, what's that gonna buy?
I'm gonna start openly weeping in front of a lot of people.
I'm sorry, alright, alright.
I will do that.
Richard, please.
What about taking this to town council?
You know, it's costly, but-
It's costly, and I, you know, you feel confident-
It's costly and I, you know, you feel confident that we have the authority to say, take it out?
Well, we certainly cannot approve this subdivision plan change. And then what's the remedy?
Yeah.
After that?
What happens if we say no?
Yeah.
What is the, what is the legal, I mean, what does a subdivision map legally signify?
That is, that's a legal document approved. The subdivision map itself is filed in the land record.
So that's filed in?
Yeah. But there's nothing specific to each individual deed or plot that says that there's, you know, a conservation easement.
Well, my, my concern is that the original developer did this and he forgot. And there is a local property owner who is affected and has expressed that concern. And our job is to sort of recognize when that happens. And I don't know that this would have been approved originally if there would have been a driveway out onto 77. As a planned development, it had certain characteristics which made the Planning and Zoning Commission say yes back then. And one of those conditions was that the roads, the driveways all went to that, that cul-de-sac. So now, we're sort of changing the rules that it got approved by, and that's a critical component.
We certainly know easy table this, and we could, you know, see if we could work something out further with it, with the developer and the, and the affected prop- property.
Say it to work out. It's either there or it's gone.
Well, no, there's intermediate. If $750,000 into the land acquisition fund would probably make everybody happy.
I think that's a possibility.
The neighbor across the street.
Neighbor across the street.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm leaning towards maybe voting yes or no here and now. You know, what do you guys think?
You have the motion on. You may, someone make the motion.
No.
What do you guys think? This is a tough one.
Exactly. I said, that's why we have Town Council.
Yeah, all right. So you want to wait till?
You have a question for Town Council, whether we can or can't, because the deed.
What's the liability of town?
I mean, we have, this document's already real. I think that we have all the authority we need here and now.
I believe we have the authority. So you want to wait for council? Frank, what do you say?
I said, my biggest problem is it wasn't on the land record. I think that's where I'm hung up on. That's where I would say it would have to be, it would have to be let go.
All right. So you're done for taking a vote now?
Yeah.
And, and requiring that they put it on the land records like Kevin was saying.
Exactly.
Josh?
Yeah. I would just be concerned as, similar to Richard, that they were saying that the deed, because this was filed, this article, maybe not this particular one, but the subdivision plan was filed on the land record. Each individual plot doesn't have a conservation easement through it, and that makes me nervous to make a decision on, on this.
Right. But I, I'm feeling confident myself that we have the authority because that was filed with the town and it's the original developer. I'm feeling good.
Well, original, it's an original condition. I think, I mean, I think that we have enough.
So would someone like to make?
Go. All right. Vote. The Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approved a revision to the 75-foot conservation easement for Lot 2 of the Andrews Ridge Section 1 subdivision as shown on an improvement location survey, Lot 2 Andrews Ridge, dated May 28, 2014, prepared by Anderson Associates, to locate a driveway in the easement area. The revision is approved with the following conditions. One, a formal conservation easement document be filed in the town land record for subdivision Lot Number 2, and if possible, Lots 1 and 3, based on the agreement of the owners of Lots 1 and 3. The language of the conservation easement shall be in accordance with the standard easement document of the town of Guilford. The terms of the conservation easement shall be made restrictive covenant, running with the land, binding on successors and assigns. If a conservation easement is not approved by town meeting, the applicant shall file a deed restriction with similar language. Two, a revision to the subdivision map showing the driveway location through the conservation easement area be filed in the town land records. Three, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for a house on Lot Number 2 until the conservation easement has been filed as required above, and the conservation easement area has been properly marked with iron pins and signage. This application is approved based on the finding that it conforms with the zoning and subdivision codes of the town.
All right. So, so let's just make it absolutely clear. All right. If we vote yes for this, the driveway stays. If we vote no, the driveway's got to go and the tree's got to come back.
Well, if you vote no, this motion fails. And then it, it goes to Reggie to try to enforce the, whatever.
All right. Do you have an additional condition about land acquisition or?
Well, maybe additional condition about speaking with the engineer about drainage.
Yeah. You should definitely include.
I'm quite confident that DOT is going to require that proper drainage be put in here. It's their road. They don't like to have their road washed away.
Yeah.
But we can. Yeah.
My favorite, the driveway.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
I, well. My problem is that I don't think that we would have approved this. I think this is a game of chicken.
I happen to agree that the Planning and Zoning Commission would not have approved this if it was a drought run to 77. And at that time, the adjacent homeowners would have been able to say, you know, you're developing this 40 acres or whatever it is back there, and you're having a roadway put in. We're not down with the additional drainage. What else?
Well, then the idea that the original developer forgot, knew or should have known.
I don't disagree that he knew or should have known. They had filed a conservation easement. I'm just concerned about.
I think it's more shaky.
Shaky is good.
But notch. I, I mean, this is fine. That's it. This is real.
It's a real town record. It has a lot. Okay, all right. You know, we have a second. We have a motion. We have a second. Are we ready? All in those in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Anderson. Sorry. Okay, site plan, DDR 1919. Oh, no, wait.
Jumped the gun.
I jumped the gun. Look at that. Terrible, terrible, terrible.
Guilford Savings Bank.
Guilford Savings Bank, site plan. I'm sorry. I truly apologize. I'm sorry.
Recommend table.
Guilford Savings Bank, 1 Park Street, Map 40, Lot 11, Zone CD, Site Plan Modification, Rebuilding and Moving the Existing Drive Up Canopy, New Walkways to New Public Entrance, New Egress Exit and Moving Existing HVAC Condensers from Ground Level to New Door Canopy. Request to table. Do we need a motion to table? Anyone care to make a move? Richard, thank you. Any seconds?
Second.
That's wonderful. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Applications to be received. Do we need to make a motion to receive? Let's, let's have a motion to receive these applications. Anyone here to make that motion?
You're doing all three up together?
Yeah, let's do all three together.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Okay.
You're really breaking with tradition here.
Going from 30.
Oh, they do?
I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah. They have different public hearing days.
Individually, because they have different public hearing days.
Oh, you're right. You're right.
Thirty years of tradition, Richard.
I know, I know. Just cutting edge. Let's do the first one. Can I have a motion for Martha Pearson's application?
Why don't you go into Earl's?
Earl's.
Earl's on State Street.
Oh, Earl's on top. I'm sorry. Can't see so well. Sorry.
Number one, I'd like to move Earl's William &amp; Gloria, 40, 40 State Street, Map 39, Lot 54, Zone R1, Special Permit for Addition on Lot Under 10,000 Square Feet, Section 273-15G. Receive and set public hearing for July 16, 2014. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? No, who carries? Coastal Area Management Plan. Do you want to handle this one too, sir?
Yeah, sure.
You can do these two together.
You want to do them together? That's just really tough.
Can I move on numbers one and two together?
Let's do that.
Without, without reading the text?
Second.
Okay, we're, we're really cutting here.
Breaking with tradition.
Say all in favor.
Okay. All those in favor?
Set date for meeting.
August 6th?
Set date for August 6th, 2014.
Excellent. Okay. You okay, Karen? Everything's good? All right. Site plan, DDR. Here we go. DDR 1919 Boston Post Road, Map 79, Lot 34, 35, 36, A, Zone SCW Modification to Site Plan. Receive and set meeting date of July the 16th, 2014. Here, preliminary presentation. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Nuff. We're determined to go on 147 Broad Street in Milford. And I'm here tonight on behalf of DDR LLC, DDR Guilford LLC. As you noted, this is a application to modify a site plan approval we first received in January of 2008. And I think in 2012, that site plan approval was extended until the year 2022. Between those two dates, you revised your regulations to create a new threshold for special permits. But I would note that we are not applying for a special permit. We don't exceed any of the building size thresholds that would require a special permit. So this is only a site plan application. And in fact, the zoning committee was kind enough to hold a special meeting, process discuss sort of unusual Tennessee, and that's off the table as well. So we have a very straightforward site plan modification application. Obviously, this project has gone through a very lengthened hibernation since construction activities ceased back in 2008, 2009. A lot of springs have come and gone with no awakening, but I think the spring of 2014 is the magic year such that the project is brought back to life, and we're very happy to be before you tonight to begin the process of, you know, bringing this project to fruition and begin construction. You're going to see that the application or the project is virtually unchanged from that which was approved in 2008. The uses are still a combination of retail and restaurant, one restaurant, all the rest is dry retail. The overall development window is unchanged. Storm guard treatment, wetland protection, drainage, access, wastewater treatment are all unchanged. And also unchanged is DDR's commitment to doing a really special development as something specifically tailored to the town of Guilford. We recently had a couple of informal meetings with the Design Review Committee, and I think they took what I believe is the unprecedented step of giving us a tentative approval before we actually have submitted our, have had to submit our official application to you folks. So the question is, what is the difference from the approved plan? And really, it's just a reconfiguration of, I know that there's a lot of new faces in the world from 2008, but this building was originally just one unified, connected building, and we simply separated it. So it's just a question of exchanging hardscapes of roof for pavements, and I'll probably be discussing that a little bit with our architect, Frankie Campion. In terms of, oh, by the way, there's also 10,000 square feet less than what was originally approved in 2008. And I think you'll see that the architecture has changed somewhat as well. It's been updated, and in a way that I think DRC obviously likes by the best. Just let me tell you a little bit about the process. As I noted, we've met with DRC twice. We met with them, I think, three weeks ago on an informal basis. Frankie presented our elevations, our plans. They offered some very candid construction, constructive criticism, knowing that we're going to be before you this evening. They were kind enough to hear us at a special meeting, and we were back before them last week, and they were very receptive to the new designs and the new looks. So we're going to be back before DRC for the third time, a week from tonight, and then back before you on the 16th. And it is our fervent hope and prayer that we can do our full presentation on the 16th and in fact, get an approval in two weeks because my client is very, very anxious to be, to begin construction as soon as possible. So just to make the process more efficient, and not just tonight, but for, over the next couple of weeks, we're going to present to you the changes from the 2008 plan those approved. But nevertheless, we have our full team here, even though each of their areas of expertise have our unchanged. We have traffic, we have landscape design, we have our civil engineer for drainage and everything else regarding the sites. Again, we're not going to be making a formal presentation, but should any questions come up, we want to make sure that we can answer them to the best of our ability. So that, I'd like to introduce Frankie Campion, who's our new, a new architect of the project from Creeds in New York City.
He's still on my panel. Thank you very much. Nice to be in front of you this evening. As mentioned, the plan has changed somewhat. It's gotten a little bit smaller. We have met with DRC. It was, it wasn't the constructive criticism. Didn't walk away with any bruises, but I think we came back and made the project better in the way that they wanted. It did start with some minor site plan adjustments that they requested when we were there. One was specifically to link the two buildings together with a pathway that was safe to walk on, would be illuminated, and have some nice pavement as well, and then to create a visual access at the end of that vista so that you could see something straight through. They understood that the layout was being done with three junior anchors here and more inline shops here, and a plaza at this end proceeding and congregating as well. The architecture sort of got its inspiration from some of the local vernacular, but we're not trying to emulate it. Obviously, it's a shopping center. It's on a much grander scale. The details are larger. And if we were to do sort of what you have here downtown in the residences, the scale just wouldn't work. So it's a larger scale that works with the size of the buildings. And it was requested that we mix up some of the materials between the three junior anchors. It was requested that the center tenant be more of a feature tenant as opposed to three horizontal façades and entry features. DDR is imposing the architecture as a criteria with the national plans that they are currently in these negotiations with. So they understand that this is the look that they must go by. It's not a rendering that we're depicting to you or to DRC to be swapped out with a national prototype or and so forth. So right now, we are furthest along in conversation with the center tenant. They are on board. They have added glazing that DRC has requested. This is the pergola element that's at the end of the vista that I just mentioned over here between the two tenants. And then we're mixing the masonry, brick, CMU, and stone across the front. The inline tenants become somewhat of a smaller scale. We're mixing up awnings with a resolay with a product called parasolay that goes on top that we discussed with the landscape architect of the DRC board, and sent them some examples of that as well. They were not as concerned, and they actually, they commented that they were in favor of the roof lines and the facade of this building not changing and adding different types of pieces because it was discussed with DRC. That they were really, they understood this as sort of, I can almost call it the matriarch of the site as you drive in, that that's what you see the furthest away with the board perspective. So working through the elevations as we did with them, they asked that we create 3D rendering so that everybody could sort of understand the exact view and vantage points from within the site. So this is, they can draw approximately here and looking back at the inline retail tenants. This is a view from the bridge on 95. It was a view that was requested as well. So that may, DRC have requested actually that we create an element on the corner and locate the signage for all the tenants in one area as opposed to across the back of the entire center. So what you're seeing here is the back of the junior tenants from the bridge. It is, it is a quick glimpse. Obviously, it's something that you will be noticing more often than passerby through Guilford. It's a quick glimpse because as you get right past the bridge is every brush also along and so forth. But it was important to look at the seat and the scale of the existing buildings. And then as mentioned, the junior box where the anchored tenant buildings, if you will. In addition to the architecture and the materials which we discussed and approved, they also discussed hardscaping and landscaping. So it's hard to see from across the room, but we did indicate all the hardscaping that will occur through the sidewalk and through the property. There are areas of landscaping, not only through the site with painter boxes, but across the fronts of the retail tenants as well. And then we discussed our landscape architect animations and a piece of color and fasted as opposed to just.
Frank, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Where the, the first row to your right and then the row at the bottom there, there's a walkway that goes across. How will you access the parking on the other side of the walkway?
This here is a paved walkway through the asphalt. So it's on gray.
Oh, so you can drive?
You can drive across it. Correct. Correct. It's a textured print in the asphalt, and then it changes color, so it gives you that grumble as you drive over it. But it was something that was desired from DRC to create a link through the parking lot so that people were not actually walking in between cars. So we created a dedicated landscape and sidewalk area, and we actually, in the process of doing that, we eliminated a whole row of parking to accommodate the cars.
Any concerns about pedestrians if they walk in or cars are driving through?
I think, I think that's exactly why they requested it, because rather than, if you can imagine the scheme prior, this, there was no walkway, there was just parking facing in to each other as there is over here. And the concern was that people would be walking from the inline shops to the juniors in the actual drive-by. So they preferred that we create a sidewalk landscaping area. So it would be a raised sidewalk, just like it was a building to a tenant, creating actually a safer environment.
Got you. Yes. So there's not much other than the square footage reduction and increase of part on the ground, there's not much difference than the original plan, right?
Frank, could you show the plan that we said done in comparison? You know, this is a little bit hard to see, so if I can, I'll bring it over to you. And what you see, what you can see is, in red is outlined the original approved plan, and then that is superimposed over the proposed plan. So you can see that the primary difference is that this entire building is stretched over to the building on the far, or south.
Now you have a break.
And right now, so these types of tenants require more dedicated parking, and so they sort of get their own parking field, but as Frankie mentioned, DRC had the excellent idea of helping to create a linkage between the two sets of buildings, and we're having to do that. But, you know, as we mentioned, everything down to drainage, as a matter of fact, we submitted a memo to Kevin McGee, who is obviously staffed to the Weatherly Commission, and there was an initial memo with some more supporting data to demonstrate that even the drainage is identical to that which was approved by Inland Wetlands back in 2000, I think actually 2007 as well. So down to that level of detail, it is identical. I know the landscaping on the periphery is the same, there's a very robust landscaping. In fact, there was a number of conditions that were first imposed by the planning zoning commission in 2008, and this revised, or this plan reflects those proposed revisions. Even the previous pavers along Spinning Mill Brook are the same as what was first approved. So, you know, with these, I think it's a fairly minor addition, revision of the configuration of buildings. Everything's the same, in particular, the actual development envelope, including a stormwater basin over here, stormwater basins on the other side, on the other side of the bridge over here, so.
The, the parking lot above the Russo building with the, that currently houses the liquor store and the, and Guilford sporting goods. As you know, that building was built without enough parking back in the 90s, and...
And when we acquired our property from Russo's, they required an easement so that they were not out of compliance in the parking. So our parking accounts for their need to service those tenants.
So that parking lot, the current parking lot that's slightly down, downgrade from the rest of your, behind your juniors, behind your most easternmost junior, that's the southeast, that'll still be there, or it'll be gone?
No, I think, I think you're speaking, the parking lot is right here, so that will be part of our new, you know, rear parking lot. And while we don't have specifically dedicated spaces as a practical matter, you know, those folks are going to be parked, or actually parked.
Yeah, John has taught our site, we're going to get all, it'll, the parking lot that exists today will stay, we're obligated to provide access to it.
Okay. So is that white directly to the right of the topmost junior?
That's correct.
And it'll still be there?
It'll still be there.
Even though obviously now people will be parking wherever? Maybe they'll still be?
And Frank, it'd be a lot easier for those, you know, once the construction's complete, a lot easier for those folks to get there.
Quick question, this probably goes more to wetlands or not. The septic approval on-site sanitation still remains the same?
Absolutely. As you probably know, we received our approval from some DEP, now DEEP. That was a tentative determination. You don't get your final, final permit until the system's actually up and operating. So, you know, that, that permit, that tentative approval is still active, and that will be reactivated as we work through the process. All the checks and balances and bells and whistles and belt and suspenders and ropes that Inland Wetlands and WPCA impose on us, they're all still there and will comply with all.
The total number of parking spaces?
It is, Chris, six. Proposed total number, excuse me, of parking spaces right now is 650.
And that doesn't include that little lot that we were just talking about that's with this development?
One of the big impacts of this development is beyond Route 1. Significant traffic improvements, controls and infrastructure requirements were created by DOT back in 2008. Has any of that changed?
No, as a matter of fact, for the purposes of this application, even though our square footage has been reduced, we're assuming that the traffic generation rates are the same. So the, the improvements that will require by STC then, OSTA now, are the same. As a matter of fact, we're about to call our approach from permit, and our hope is to begin construction, you know, in August for the improvements with, with OSTA.
Okay. The traffic's not here tonight?
We have our traffic engineer, yes. The full team is here, if there's anything, you know, we want to be able to respond to everything as thoroughly as we possibly can.
You're the same traffic engineer that did the Costco application also?
There was no Costco.
A Costco application?
There was no Costco.
The, I'm sorry, the Big Box application.
Fred, did you work on that? I don't recall.
Which Big Box?
Oh, Costco.
Never came to application.
There was no Costco application.
Ultimately, there was no Costco application.
They never formally filed.
No. Understood.
What's that? Any other questions? Okay. Very nice, gentlemen.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Good job. All right. We are up to zoning amendments.
Do we receive and set the public hearing for that?
Oh.
There's no public hearing required.
Or what's it say? Does it say we set the meeting? Did we do it?
Yeah. Maybe you should have a motion to receive.
Site plan.
All right, move that. We receive and set the meeting date of July 16th, 2014?
I second that.
Okay, I second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay, fine. I carry. Zoning amendments. The adult-oriented facilities conversation we need to have it. George, what do you know about it?
Well, you asked me to draft a proposed regulation that was more or less conforming and consistent with the comments that we received a month or so ago, Chuck Andrus, on this subject. So I've endeavored to do that. I believe you all received a copy of it, but I'll, I'll go over it. I think it meets the requirements and the standards that Chuck set. I believe it's in a, it's in a level of draft that it could be easily put in final form, and we could set a public hearing date on this if that's your, your desire and you agree with this approach. Let me quickly go over it. The definition of adult-oriented facilities, as you know, we have a definition today. This proposal expands that definition to introduce the concept of facility where goods or services are primarily of a sexually explicit nature. I've endeavored to define primarily. I think this was a suggestion of Chuck's. This step, this definition is one in which at least 33% of the monetary value of the products sold, entertained or provided or service rendered is of sexually explicit nature. There's also a question of what that means, sexually explicit. We are in possession of a definition that the federal government, the Federal Trade Commission has promulgated for uses of this kind, and my proposal is that we use that definition as part of this regulation. Goes into a little bit more explicitness about what sexually explicit means, but it's still fairly brief, and to me at least, quite clear. The second part of this is that we make adult-oriented facilities, as defined just above, permitted uses in both the TS and the TS2 districts. The TS district, as you know, is the area on Route 1, basically from State Street East, encompasses all the commercial frontage with the exception of the Shoreline Plaza, which is a separate zone. Otherwise, all of that commercial frontage east of State Street is in the TS zone. The TS2 district is an area on the west side of town that encompasses several of the area strips of commercial development on Route 1 West. So that this proposal makes adult-oriented facilities a permitted use in the TS and TS2 zones, subject to the additional standards that I'll talk about right now. This section includes a purpose and a finding. As Chuck suggested, we need to spell out why we're treating these types of facilities differently than other types of either retail stores or service establishments or entertainment establishments. And we will do that by introducing evidence at the public hearing, including studies that establish the fact that adult-oriented facilities do have the potential to cause adverse impacts, reduce property value, increase crime, and impede the development of the town. And that gives us the ability, because we make those findings, to treat them differently and regulate them more specifically and more stringently than we otherwise would be able to. As you can see in this, the way I've drafted this, there'll be some references in the final text of this to the documents and the studies that are, that have been promulgated along these lines. In terms of the specific standards for adult-oriented facilities, they will include a setback from residences and/or residential zone district boundaries, 500 feet. No facility can be located closer than 500 feet to either a residential zone district boundary or to a residence. As you know, both the TS and the TS2 districts do permit residential uses. So if there is a residential use in either the TS or TS2 zone and a facility is proposed closer than 500 feet, it would not be permitted. On the other hand, this won't, this will not inhibit the right to develop property within that district, within either of those districts. If a developer wants to develop a residence within 500 feet of any such facility that already exists, they would be able to do that. Also, and we would, we would link this to a specific finding that facilities of this kind do have the potential to adversely affect residential property values. So we could, well, that gives us the right to create this separating distance. Similarly, there will, there are findings that indicate that when such facilities are concentrated in a small geographic area, the adverse impacts are greater. So we will be within our authority to establish separating distances between adult-oriented facilities, and this proposal creates a 1,500-foot separating distance between any approved adult-oriented facility or an existing one. We also will establish hours of operation for such facilities. This proposal limits them from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Again, we can, we'll make a finding specific to that. This proposal prohibits the sale of alcohol in any adult-oriented facility. I'll come back to that in a minute. And this regulation limits the size of any such facility to no greater than 10,000 square feet. I don't have a specific, I haven't found a specific reference yet to, you know, any particular size facility that is better or worse, so I need to do some more research on that subject. But we have established already in all of our commercial zones, the fact that we limit store sizes because large stores have an, have a potential to have an adverse impact in a lot of different areas. So I think we can do the same thing with, with this particular type of facility. The, I've been advised that we don't have the authority to regulate the sale of alcohol. That is state law, state reserves the right to regulate alcohol sales. So I would need, I'm going to need some help from town council on that particular subject. If you decide you do want to try to include such a, such a prohibition within this regulation, clearly, if you don't want to include it, then we don't have to worry about that. If we do, then I think it's going to, I think we need to do some further research on whether we have that authority. So that's the, that's basically the proposal. It meets the condition that we have to allow these uses, these types of uses in reasonable locations. We can't just require that they be in some obscure corner somewhere. We can't regulate them by special permit, they do have to be by site plan. But on the other hand, we can, we can, we can impose reasonable controls and limits, which this attempts to do. This, this use is allowed on both the east side and the west side. Therefore, it's not, it passes the threshold, in my opinion, that no single area of the town is targeted for this specific, you know, for this type of use. And I think the rest of it is fairly self-explanatory and clear.
George, I have a couple of questions for you. Do we, do we have to give such a large swath of the town over, or can we really, really reduce it down more? And I know that it has to be reasonable.
Right. No, I think we can. I think we can reduce it. But to me, the key things are, the key concerns are proximity to residences and concentration of facilities. So even though it sounds like, you know, there, there's a large area within which they might go, because the TS and the TS2 are both fairly large commercial areas, both of them, especially TS2, is, that area is inhabited now by significant residential developments. And therefore, the 500-foot distance would preclude, and I haven't looked at every single property in the TS zone, but would have a big impact on the TS2 zone in terms of where you could actually locate. TS, the TS zone doesn't have as much in the way of current residential development, probably because it's an older, most of the developments occurred in an earlier period of time. So that would be more likely, in my opinion, that one of these types of facilities might take, might want to locate there. Although, in both case, in all, in both the north side and especially on the south side of the, of the Boston Post Road, the proximity of residential zone lines are, to the, to Route 1 is, will be impacting these. But I haven't actually drawn a line around every single one of these to determine, but it's still pretty restrictive in my opinion. it's still pretty restrictive, in my opinion.
You picked out five hundred feet because, could we say a thousand feet? Or do we need to check and see if that eliminates every single one?
Yeah, that would be, five hundred feet is the kind of standard that other regulations have used. So that's why I picked that number.
If we wanted to go to seven hundred, I mean, is there anything limiting us to five hundred? Just that's what everybody else does?
No, that's, yeah, it's just a nice round number. There's no, obviously, you know, if it's five hundred and one feet, it's okay. And if it's four ninety-nine, it's going to really hurt somebody. I mean, it's an arbitrary number, no matter how you look at it.
Kind of lean towards a bigger number.
Right. One other thing, yeah.
And when do we say that? Like, do we say that now, or do we say that when we're in the next meeting? Do we say, gee, I'd like it to be eight hundred?
Well, I'd like to, you know, if we, the general rule is, if we have a public hearing on something, you can't make it more restrictive after the public hearing.
So if we wanted to notice a public meeting, we would need to say the higher number now?
Rather have the bigger number now, right?
Right. So I'd really kind of like to do that. I know that it's not what other people do, other towns do. But I really, really, really want to be respectful of people's homes.
Sure.
And, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, this town is all about the people who live here and the homes. And if we can make that, I'd like to notice a thousand feet. And if we have to cut it back, we have to cut it back. But at least we're noticing a high number so that, you know, and again, it would probably be after you draw the lines and figure out just how much land is okay after.
I can take a look at that, for sure. I think even five hundred, I mean, five hundred feet is a pretty good distance.
I like more.
A thousand feet's almost a quarter of a mile.
Yeah, that's good. I'm thinking about ten thousand.
But we could notice a thousand feet, and then if we think that a thousand feet is not going to pass muster, pass legal muster, then we can.
Sure. So let's notice a thousand feet if we can, and we can always turn it back.
It's pretty clear that five hundred does pass muster because so many towns have done it successfully.
It's been used before, so yes.
I don't mind being at the cutting edge.
I had a question with your definition.
The bleeding edge. The bleeding edge.
I'm sorry.
Your definition of primarily.
Yeah. That's pretty, that's just an arbitrary number on my part.
Oh, no, that's not my, just a sort of, say, monetary value of products sold, comma, entertainment provided, or services rendered is of a sexually explicit nature. I think there needs to be like, after whatever arbitrary number you decide, like, colon, either and.
I know what you mean.
You're going to get some, you have a bar that doesn't really offer anything, but I don't really care. Topless dancers, stuff, I don't know, you know what I mean? So it's just, your wording of it is a little bit vague.
It is, and that's a perfect example. Somebody else pointed that out to me. I mean, what if you have a bar with topless dancers? What's, you know, if you buy a drink there, you know, how much of it goes towards the topless dancer and how much of it is just the value of the beer?
But I think though, if you do it like that, you could say, okay, well, if, you could sort of categorize what's, first of all, there really can't be any sexual services, right?
No, sexual.
So sexual services is, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so.
Prostitution is illegal in Connecticut.
It's illegal, so that's not really that big of a, percentage of sexual services doesn't really necessarily apply, but entertainment provided, it has, if like there's music, if it's mostly music or something, thirty-three percent.
It's hard to judge that, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think though, if you either and, if you add something there to.
I understand.
Make it sharper, it might be more effective.
Yeah.
Mr. Green, what do you mean by sexually explicit? Are we talking about totally nude?
Let me read the.
Is that going to be a?
Do you want me to read it? I gave it to you, but I don't.
The real defining definition of what that.
Yeah, we do have.
Yeah, we've got like a lot of, unfortunately, these things have to be.
We're going to have to say, through the course of this, and let's just, you know, acknowledge this, we're going to have to say things and express thoughts that might be offensive to some people just to get the log down. Right. Do you have a copy of it? I'll read it if you have a copy.
I thought I had a copy of it somewhere.
I got a copy of it, the US Commerce Department calls it.
I can read it, I'll be glad to read it, actually.
It means a lot of different.
I think it means everything that you're saying.
I have this on my computer. Yeah, he's going to read it.
One of us is going to read it.
I gave mine away, so I can't read it. Isn't that convenient?
I made a copy of it here.
Well, you know, I think maybe we need to read it for the folks that are going to be watching the videos, so that they know what we're talking about, too.
Okay, because this doesn't really. Services rendered?
Yeah, I think that needs to be clarified.
Does this mean massage, or totally nude massage? I mean, I think you really need to have a exact definition, because I have another house in another state and have to go to the airport and say.
That's going to be completely different.
All nude dancers.
That's nothing, massage has nothing to do with this thing at all.
Well, it could be sexually explicit, I mean, nude massage.
Here's the Federal Trade Commission definition of sexually explicit.
Lots up in LA.
Let's listen to George. George has it, man.
Depictions or descriptions of sexual references, full or partial nudity, including depictions of uncovered female breasts, aroused or unaroused male or female genitalia, and unrealistic or overly detailed genitalia, bestiality, sexual acts to or with minors, anyone under the age of eighteen, sexual acts including but not limited to penetrations slash intercourse and/or oral sex with or without another avatar or any other object, including overt sexual toys and/or sexual aids, or sexual behavior that has a violent content.
That's excluded, right?
That's the definition of sexually explicit content, according to the Federal Trade Commission.
So then it's allowed sexually explicit?
No, this is, this is, it's not prohibited.
You said it's not prohibited, what you just read.
That is what we're defining as sexually explicit, which would be regulated pursuant to this proposal.
George, with the alcohol, I had thought that Connecticut followed New York State in allowing the sale of alcohol to be regulated at these places. And I had thought that municipalities were not preempted from regulating that. I'm not sure of that.
I'm not either. I need to talk to town council about that.
Yeah, Connecticut otherwise does sort of keep us from regulating the sale of alcohol, I believe. But I think for these circumstances.
Because if there was a store, for example, that sold, you know, sexually explicit products, that store could also, assuming they had the proper, you know, permits, they could sell beer and wine, I think, although I'm not, you know, that's what we're trying to prohibit, I gather. Not that we would prohibit, you know, in a nightclub or a bar, the sale of alcohol.
Right, I think, well, my view is, you know, if it's going to be a topless bar or a stripper's bar, I really don't want that here.
Right.
So that's what I mean.
The point of all this, though, is, right now, it's legal everywhere. So that's why we have to have a statute that sort of brings it.
I totally agree with you. What Mr. Kraw said, bestiality and a number of other things, you said those were the definition of sexually explicit?
Well, I guess, I mean, I guess what that means is not the act of bestiality, but the depiction of it.
That's correct.
In literature or whatever.
That's how.
And also, it said something about minor.
Or the depiction of.
Minor sexual.
If it's otherwise illegal, then we don't have to worry about it.
The depiction as opposed to the reality.
Right.
The reality is already.
I don't know whether it's.
Okay.
Are we at the public forum yet, or not really?
Feel free, join in.
It seems to me as though what we're standing about is trying to read federal law and, at the same time, discourage this activity. And if that's indeed the situation, I'm kind of leaning towards where you started with this, Rich, Mr. Chairman. That's a lot of land, TS two and TS, if you don't mind me saying so. And while I respect George's efforts, I would really want to see the map that you might generate to have a visual on this. I can think of the Sullivan Farm on the west end of Route One, which has approximately thirty-eight acres bordering on Route One, that would easily qualify under this definition to allow these activities right now. And that's just because I'm familiar with that particular swath of land, which just happened to be flipped from residential to TS two this past November. I assume that there are other parcels of land, east and west, that would qualify, and I'm not entirely sure why this board wouldn't necessarily be looking at the industrial zones.
We started to look at that, and.
I thought so.
And George was, your concern is that that's too far out of the way. No business could survive there, and we can't really regulate it to the point where they can't survive. Is that true?
That was Chuck Amherst's.
Yeah, right, so town council said.
Some industrial zones are in prominent locations. There are some industrial zones where the land is in prominent locations, but if you were to try to restrict it in such a way, it's only available in some remote corner somewhere, that would violate the intent.
This is actually the only part, Chuck, Chuck has done an amazing job on a long string of things recently, and I think that, I really appreciate that he put through findings and some other things on this. The only thing that I tend to disagree about here with all of this is that I one and I two zones, I think they do meet the definition of a realistic or plausible area that would be utilized for this, because they are so close to exit fifty-nine, and they are so close to a whole set of commercial retail stores, particularly just north of ninety-five, at exit fifty-nine, and directly south of ninety-five, down where we used to have the, well, down where the propane is now, but also as we move closer to Route One. And I wonder, just as a question of fact, I wonder whether or not the I one or I two, or at least the I one and I two zones together don't actually meet the necessary.
You've identified one. Certainly, the, for example, the areas that are at exit fifty-eight, the interchange area at exit fifty-eight is an industrial zone. Interchange area at exit fifty-seven on the north side is an industrial zone. Those might very well be the types of locations where these types of stores might want to go, but.
But those are smaller.
Those are, I mean, several, I mean, there's some fairly large parcels there where such a thing perhaps could be developed. That's another option, but that seems, that might be even, depending on your point of view, even more objectionable.
How do you figure?
Because of the visibility, I mean, that's, those are gateways to the town.
You're right. But, you know, that's one of the aspects, but my main concern is people's homes. You know, is it really in our opinion as to what's viable? Like, if we really mulled this over and think about it and really take it seriously, and in our hearts, make a decision that it should be viable there, is someone going to second guess us? Does it really come down to what we think, knowing the neighborhood, knowing the community?
Well, the one thing that, if we don't, the resident, I think one of the things the town fears is that if we are too restrictive, we will be sued, and that we won't be able to defend ourselves based on the highly litigious nature of these types of, of this particular issue.
How large an area it is, I one and I two?
It's large, I mean.
Is it so large that we're really sueable?
I think if you allow, if this same regulation had all these same rules and standards, only we substituted I one and I two for TS and TS two, I think that would be viable. Because there clearly are, you know, some major areas where, that it would be appropriate. We don't allow retail stores now in those zones at all.
Right, but we can change that.
So we'd be making an exception of a certain type of retail store, which would probably be okay.
Yeah, and I'm thinking of other.
I'm not sure that they're any less proximate to residential areas, and they are, in some cases, much more visible.
Yeah, residential areas would also, that five hundred-foot restriction would become much more real in an I one or I two zone because of the homes that are around the edge of the I one and I two, right?
Yeah. In my heart of hearts, I'd rather have them in I one and I two away from people's homes than away, out of sight. Well, they're not really out of sight, if they're on US Route One, they're in sight.
Yeah, and if they're at Goose Lane and Route One, I mean, at I ninety-five, that's pretty visible. It's not out of sight. I mean, it's, it's a possibility.
So if we want to chew on this, but we want to have the public hearing date set, could we potentially include I one and I two aside from the other ones, and then really ask some of the folks that are here tonight to sort of think about it, too, and offer their opinions? Can we do that?
And/or?
And/or.
Advertise it as, allow it, I one, I two, TS and TS two?
Well, since I live in the west end, is this going to be a trade of propane, or, to quote Mr. Kraw at another PNC meeting, you said there was a perception that we'd get propane, adult facilities, and then low-income housing, as I'm sure you recall yourself, the same meeting Mr. McLoon suggested that, Sullivan property in North Guilford already should be a preserve, so, I mean, you're going to give us all the crap? I just got a new tax bill. You going to lower my tax bill?
Well, you have no I one and I two.
No, we have T one.
TS two.
That's right, exactly.
TS is all, all well to the east.
I know where the TS two is.
No, I mean, only TS two, of these four, only TS two exists in the, on the west end of town.
And he just said TS two.
Correct?
Yep.
Ms. Green?
Could I ask you, one of the things considered about west end was that some of the residences could be used as commercial buildings. Then does that mean that the five hundred or a thousand feet is no longer applicable to that particular spot?
That's a good question.
If it's no longer a residence, if someone puts an insurance company in a house there instead of a family?
George?
If, I mean, this refers, these types of regulation refers to the use of the property, not what the building looks like. So it might look like a house, in fact, it might have been a house, but if it's now office, then it would not, then this would, then such as, so it could be located within five hundred feet of that, unless there's another house that's within five hundred feet, that would not be able to be.
Well, it does say residential zone district boundary.
Or zone. We're assuming that this, I'm not sure if you were, maybe you were alluding to something that we talked about earlier, which was a provision, maybe, for converting residences that were right on Route One into business or professional offices, even though they might be in a residential zone. So if they're in a residential zone, that would, this, it couldn't, this, they wouldn't be permitted.
So it won't be rezoned?
No, it's not rezoned, just be, this is, we're talking about hypothetical, where we create a new zone that allows the conversion of residences into business and professional offices within a residential zone, say, you know, along Route One or within a hundred feet of Route One or something like that, then this would not, this would not be permitted in that area, because it's not a TS zone. This would only be permitted in the TS or TS two zone, the way it's written, or the I one or I two, or however we end up writing it.
Well, you know what, for our next hearing, if we could, if it's not too much, maybe we could have a visual representation of what it would mean if it was in I one, I two, and also the other ones, either or. And let's notice that it could be either or. And this way, you know, we can have a real picture if five hundred feet or seven hundred feet.
Either or, you mean, all four?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I'm not sure, how do you do it, either or?
Either or.
Well.
And/or.
Yeah, I think, I think it sounds like doing some kind of map is what you would like to see. And that map would include both TS, TS two, I one, and I two.
Yeah, and then we could sort of make sense of it.
Right.
Because, you know, in my heart of hearts, again, I really, I want to respect people's homes, and if it means that, and the odds of this actually being viable for any real business is probably pretty slim. business is probably pretty slim, but if by some chance it happens to be a viable business and it happens to open, I'd rather have it by an entrance ramp to a highway than in someone's backyard. And I think that's what the people would want us to want, and that's really who we're serving here. So if we could see those pictures, that would be great.
Okay.
Walter?
Just on it, just going to viability in terms of the, the hours restriction, Chuck had a lot more confidence in the restriction of hours as well as the, what I keep calling the blue law restriction, which is not really what it is, which is the Sunday restriction. He felt he had real confidence that, that, that was viable and appropriate, even as he thought that the alcohol sales...
Might not be approved.
Might not be approved. Understood.
And the, the other thing, and I don't know if this is doable either, ten thousand feet is awfully big, and I'd sort of like to notice a much lower number, and then if we have to raise it to meet the criteria of viable, we could do that. But I'm thinking like two thousand feet would be...
Is what those stores are along, right?
Yeah.
Frank, how big are the stores along Route One? Just past the diner on the right, so, like a Chinese food place?
Probably go anywhere from...
CVS.
Eight hundred square feet to five thousand.
CVS is about, probably about the same size as our store. CVS is probably about twenty thousand square feet.
Really?
And the dollar store is about the same.
That's twenty, yeah.
Yeah. So ten thousand square feet is pretty, is fairly small. I mean, it's not small compared to the stores on the Green, but it's small compared to a typical Route One type store.
Well, outside of those, that, that one plaza, one shopping center, they're relatively eight hundred to five thousand, I don't think you're getting bigger than that, type of stores.
These things tend to be freestanding stores. Shopping center owners don't like to have them. They tend to be freestanding buildings. But these are the retail stores, not the clubs.
Yeah, which makes them typically larger, which makes an overly tight restriction less defensible.
Five thousand square feet might be kind of small.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a comment on that?
Absolutely, please.
Okay. This is going to suck up a tremendous amount of your time trying to solve a problem that's really not going to be able to solve. I mean, right now, it's federal regulation, freedom of speech. Right now, it's allowed every retail establishment in the zones in Guilford. To try to narrow that down is, is, is not going to stand, stand any test at any federal court. It's just, you're trying to do something that we all agree with you. We all like to prevent adult-oriented facilities coming to Guilford, but legally, I think you're, you're playing with serpent when it comes to that. And also, you're building a strong man. There is no issue. There's no one wants to put adult entertainment facility in Guilford. There's no one making application for it. No one has made application in the past, no one's even thinking about making application to this, because quite frankly, any kind of facility like that would go bust, it wouldn't be supported. And if it was supported by Guilford, well, then we have another problem. So, and then where do you draw the line? I mean, there are other businesses that are undesirable. Guns-Rus may want to come to Guilford. A lot of people may not want that. An abortion clinic may want to come to Guilford. People may not want that, or any other kind of business that we have in this country for freedom to operate, as long as their businesses are successful and they fill a need. And if there's no need, there's no success. And also, too, freedom of speech works both ways. If an adult-oriented facility opened up here in Guilford, we could boycott that, we could picket it, we could try to put it out of business with our freedom of speech. But again, it's a strong man. It doesn't exist. It's a problem that doesn't exist. Why are we even discussing it? It's, it's the federal law, it's freedom of speech, it's the United States of America, even though we don't like it. It's there, and that's what it is. And trying to, to go around it, it doesn't make any sense. We have so many issues that we can't address, and can't move the town forward in a good economic way. Why are we, why are we wasting our time with this issue? That's my reply.
George, I guess I would ask you, what towns in Connecticut did you model these regs on that Chuck had discussed?
Orange has a lot, has a track record of this.
Orange had problems.
Yeah. Sabre, they're, they're all somewhat similar.
Which towns put in regulations and don't currently have this kind of development?
I don't know if there's anything in Old Sabre. I'm not sure. There is in Orange.
Middletown also has a set of regs.
I'm sure, I can't imagine that there isn't something like this in Middletown, I don't know.
Well, you know, first off, thank you. I truly appreciate your, offering your opinion. It's great, and I encourage you to do it all the time, in every meeting. We're doing this because there is a negative impact on the community. There is crime associated with these places. It does reduce the value of property. And one of the jobs that we have as Planning and Zoning Commission is to work that way. You're right, it's going to take a lot of time, absolutely, but I'm committed to spending that time myself. I took enough to do this, and so I'm going to do this. You're right, it's, it's going to be hard to defend, and we're going to have to be really careful. And, you know, sometimes you got to do what you got to do. And for me, I feel I have to do this. It's not, anyone's making me do this. We're all here talking about it. A lot of us have strong feelings about it. I'm going to keep pushing. We may not get it done at the next meeting, but I'm going to keep pushing, and I'm going to be relentless, and I'm not going to stop. So I'm going to continue on. You have a comment?
I just wanted to say, I actually, the porno shop doesn't scare me, because they do them differently now. It's more like the rock and type stuff. What I don't want is a bar with lights flashing on Route One that says nude dancing, topless, so that we get everybody from, you know, south and everybody north and every person riding on ninety-five.
I agree.
That's, it's the nude stuff and the, and, you know, the kind of things that come with that. Actually, if it's just a porno store, I'm okay with that. It's the bar scene.
Right.
It's that kind of stuff. And then the prostitution, and I don't want somebody walking through the back of my woods because the board is on TS two, and now, you know...
I agree.
I don't want my town to do this.
Let's agree, her comes in. She says she's all right with porn store, which is not all right, it's a nudist place. I mean, you know, this has, I mean, you know, the fact is, there are statutes that regulate prostitution illegally. We were trying to, what happened to Marjorie, I mean, Marjorie I think was a little bit disappointed with the DIP just popping up, and they had their regulations in effect before that came, right? Isn't that sort of what happened there?
I can't. They had some kind of regulation which was somewhat akin to what we thought we might want to do, which was to allow only in a couple obscure corners, and the courts threw that out, and the store came in.
And they got an answer as to why the course threw that out, and then they modified their regulations to make it so that it would work. So there is stuff that does work, it's just...
Right, so we have to be careful then.
The store itself, I mean, as this young woman said, I mean, it looks like any other store. It's not like there's anything outward about it that would be offensive, really. I mean, it's only what you might imagine about, perhaps.
Well, yeah, you know, you're right, but, but let's say, you know, it's four-thirty in the afternoon, all the kids are at a Guilford High School, and they're all going down to the store and congregating in it, and, I don't know.
Yeah, it's highly unlikely, but...
I think we're ready to call the question, actually.
More like adulter adults than kids are going to be.
I think we're ready to call the question. We've got two more hearings already, can...
We don't have a question, but you want me to work on the map? That's what, you know, it's not going to be that on ours, I can definitely, I can tell.
I'd like it, I'd like it, I'd like it, and if we have any more definitions that are more clearly defined from the public, certainly, you know, we're reaching out to you and saying, give us what you got, and guide us.
Flashing, we don't allow flashing signs for any kind of business, whether it's, you know...
No moving, no flashing.
Nude dancing, or duck, or donuts, you can't have a flashing sign.
Right. But, yes.
Yes, all right. Can't even have an alternating light-up billboard.
So, do we need to do anything? Do we have a public hearing date?
Well, you know, oh, that's a good question. Do you want to see the map first?
I think I'd like to see the map at the public hearing.
Oh, you want to set a public hearing date based on this regulation, including the I-1 and I-2?
Yeah, I want to charge forward, and then we'll knock something out.
So that may, we should set a public hearing date for August sixth?
Sixth.
Twentieth?
August twentieth.
Because we have to do, do a little bit more notice with it.
We have to send it to the state.
Good. So we'll do that?
Yes, yes.
One of the twenty.
All right.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, set a public hearing date to consider this as amended.
So who wants to move that?
So, can we be able to consider the new facility, we want to use some legislation as amended for August twenty-sixth?
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
Is that in the form of a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, to be continued. Next up is correspondence. Member for the Regional Council of Governments, this little nugget, what do we got?
We typically have a representative from this commission who serves on the Regional Planning Commission. I believe it was Mr. Grigsby was the last one? So we need a volunteer.
When do these meet? What time of day? Just council should be an attorney.
They meet in the late afternoon, like five o'clock, in North Haven at the Regional Planning Commission offices. The dates of their meeting, I, I'm sure they have a regular date, but I don't know what it is.
We could volunteer Ray or Tom for this.
Since they're not here.
I bet that would be a five-to-nothing vote.
I think Tom's out. I think it's got to be an attorney. So...
It has to be an attorney?
I'm thinking, so either you, you, Ray, or Josh could do it.
No, it doesn't have to be an attorney.
George doesn't think it has to be an attorney?
I, I think you have word counsel in there.
I think it should be a developer.
I think, I think this is something that Ray might actually enjoy.
So volunteer.
Well...
Since he's not chairman anymore.
Right. We'll, we'll give him that. Any thoughts? Anyone want to volunteer for this?
Well, maybe, they have a, the Council of Government's got a $700,000 grant from the Department of Interior to do regional coastal resilience planning. So they're going to have some money, and they're going to have some major work.
Yeah, it's, it's a matter of sitting through these, these wonderful meetings. Anyone here want to step forward?
I saw that. I saw that look.
Congratulations.
No, no.
Don't look at me. Yes, no?
You can try it. Try it out, see if you like it.
Yeah, you can always say, I hate it.
And then quit?
Yeah.
We got another member.
They won't. Whoever chooses this won't, we won't let them quit, will we?
I don't know that they necessarily need every single month.
We do have alternating...
We don't know when it is, though. Mind you...
Yeah, I can't remember. I, I'm sorry, I should have had that in mind.
Can we just, can we wait until the next meeting and...
Two weeks.
We haven't had anybody for quite a while, actually.
I can't imagine why not. So good. All right, so let's, let's...
Especially it can seem convenient for somebody who like works in West Haven or New Haven or somewhere like that.
Stop it, just stop it.
That's where they are.
Stop it.
You can stop on their way home.
Who works in New Haven or West Haven?
I don't know.
Okay.
All right, so Katie, you'll put that on the next go-around? Mandatory referral conservation easement for 110 Leatherman Road, Lot 8 Bear House, Hill Estates. What is this about?
Okay, so, motions of...
Yeah.
This is...
He's got to talk about it first, huh?
This is what we were talking about before. It's a conservation easement that needs to be filed in the land records, and the Board of Selectmen have to accept it.
Yep.
And then the town has the ability to police or enforce the conservation.
Yeah, now, that, is that really problematic? I know I saw some sort of memo about that.
It can be if, if we don't have the ability to enforce it. I can remember once talking to someone who...
Keeps coming around, doesn't it? That's so funny.
It gives the town the ability, it gives the zoning officer the ability to go on the property and enforce the conservation easement if that person thinks that there's a problem.
Right. All right.
And before the town can act, this, this easement was a requirement of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before the town can actually accept this easement, you have to do this eight-dash-twenty-four referral.
And... There's no reason we wouldn't do this.
Right. And, and there's no concern, I, I know there was a concern, I, I saw in a memo about how, you know, we have so many of these now, and the concern was brought up about how expensive it is to have all these people, but you guys take care of this. I mean, that's part of what you do.
Yeah.
And so it's just more for you to do.
Well, if we don't want to do them, then we don't require them at the time the subdivision occurs. Once we've done that, then we kind of have to go through all this, go through the motions, otherwise it's problematic, is what you said.
All right, so, so we need to have a motion and a vote for this?
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission group member referral for a conservation easement for 110 Leatherman Road, Lot 8 Bear House, Hill Estates, as requested in a letter from the Board of Selection dated June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. This action is taken in accordance with section eight dash two-four of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Good for them.
I think there's one other piece of correspondence that's to read and go after.
Go with it.
All right, this is a letter, the, I don't know what it's dated. It's dated recently, about June fifth. It is from, it's a letter to the editor of the Guilford Courier, and they're asking us to take action, so we're going to read it into the record. It's from Selectman Cindy Cartier. A bulk storage business has been proposed on the west end of Route One. This area was studied back in two thousand, two thousand three as part of a comprehensive review of Route One east and west. The east end was completed in '02, and then the west end referred to as the gateway to Guilford. In two thousand and three, I served as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission during a portion of this time, and can attest to its given amount of time and resources being dedicated to study and implementation of new zoning regulations that serve to entice appropriate development while keeping the integrity of this area intact. More than ten years have passed since this was completed, with little developments occurring. However, last year, the Commission put a committee in place to revisit the zoning on the west end and determine whether changes could increase appropriate economic development. However, prior to the committee being able to complete this process, some members of the PNC voted to allow a propane storage business occur via special permit. I disagree with this change in the zoning or any application being permitted. Prior to any major change in zoning on the west end, an update, an updated comprehensive study should be completed to allow for the entire area to be reviewed, to determine positive and negative impacts that any changes would evoke due to a significant amount of time having passed. The committee has, and ultimately, the PZC may determine that changes in the zoning are needed. However, this shouldn't occur short of a holistic study being completed to ensure that any development recommended is appropriate. Accordingly, I recommend that the PZC revoke the zoning via special permit and allow the[1694.82] Accordingly, I recommend that the P Z C revoke the zoning via special permit and allow the committee to complete its review prior to the implementation of any further zoning changes.
Thank you. I'm a little bit concerned. I recommend everyone write letters to the editor, write letters to the paper, come to meetings and speak. However, this one comes from a selectman and it's in the paper. And this person was also the chairman of the Planning and Zoning, sat right here. I'd like her to come down and discuss her concerns at one of our meetings. If there are concerns, I wanna address them personally. And I think that I'd like to extend an invitation to Selectman Cartier to please come down and discuss her concerns with us directly, or with me directly. So in the next meeting or two, I'd like to see her so we can discuss that and the letter in the paper. All right.
You have, don't you have this letter from Shift Cycling? It's a request for tents.
Oh, is that the bicycle?
Tents, yeah.
I don't have that. Go with it.
All right. Dear George, Shift Cycling is proud to be partnering with Sarah Foundation to organize Spin for Sarah event on Sunday, October fifth, two thousand fourteen. This fundraiser will help raise awareness and the dollars for Sarah Foundation. The Guilford Lions Club will provide three twenty-by-thirty tents. They'll be positioned in the parking lot of our building. Tents will be installed on Saturday, October fourth, and removed on Monday, October sixth. We're looking forward to your approval. Sincerely, Jen Kuen, owner and director of Change.
Change.
That's what I got, and that's for...
So it's a tent sale, October fourth. This is right here.
No, that's, no, that's.
No, it's not a tent sale, it's just a sort of party fundraiser.
Right, what's the, what's the address?
It's, uh...
Oh, nine sixty-five Boston Coast Road.
Just, just east of State Street on the north side of the road.
It's next to the Browns, Joe.
Yeah, Creative Creations is the store that's located there.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Harold's Creation.
The old Ravis building.
Yeah, the old Ravis building. Plus, this, this business is in that building also.
Have they had these tents in the past?
This is a new business there, they just, they just, I mean, this is not uncommon to have this sort of thing.
This is well within our regular parameters and the three days is our standard number and...
Right.
Well, this is a little bit different. It's not actually outside sale of merchandise or anything, it's just a...
Fundraising.
Yeah, it's still within our jurisdiction because it's tents outside.
But we'd rather have you approve them than just have the people put them up.
I bet they've never done this in the past, so...
Right. That's why they just look forward to our approval.
Right, okay. They do look forward to it. All right, so I don't know that we really need to discuss this, why doesn't someone just make a motion?
Who that they have, their three twenty-by-thirty tents on October fourth through Monday, October sixth.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, that's good news. All right, other. Design Review Committee, just briefly, I don't know that there's a solution to this. They do a lot of work, they keep this place looking beautiful, and they are our frontline defense for things that are not a good plan. And I was considering thinking maybe of granting them some sort of more authority, but I have been, I found out that we can't really grant that authority to anybody, that it's vested solely in this commission and we can't give it away. So they are really not more than advisory, even though at times they act slightly outside of that range. So there's not much we can do. I imagine we just keep it the way it is and let what's working still work, sort of. Any other comments at all? Any thoughts? No? Okay.
I have some comments.
Go!
Okay. First of all, you have ten members on the Design Review Committee.
Yep.
You only have seven members on the Planning and Zoning. You have ten members on the Design Review Committee that are all architects, landscape architects, building architects, whatever. And so they love to put their two cents in when it comes to design. Well, you have ten architects, two cents, that's twenty cents that you're actually putting in, which is, you know, a scramble. I personally have had experience with the Design Review Committee as a developer here in Guilford. I was, the first development that went before the committee was twenty-four eighty-eight Boston Coast Road, which is my building, Harrowton Square. That was the first one that went before the committee. Before the committee many times, and although they're just an advisory committee, they don't represent themselves that way. Okay? Now, first of all, before I get into some specifics, everyone on the Design Review Committee's term has expired. Every member has expired. The lead campus expired two thousand twelve. This is two thousand fourteen, I believe. Alice Rochester, two thousand thirteen expired. William Mack, two thousand twelve expired. There's a vacancy on the, on the board that hasn't been filled. Karen Patrick Quinn expired two thirteen, twenty thirteen. Mary Grupetti expired twenty thirteen. Sean Powers expired twenty twelve. Shirley Veroni expired twenty twelve. Christopher Whitner expired twenty thirteen. Vacancy for alternate expired twenty twelve. There's, there's three openings for vacancies. There's only one member of the committee that's current, that's Robert Charny, and his term began in six, two thousand thirteen, and expires in twenty fifteen. So technically, every, just about everyone on the committee, are they really on the committee? Who are these people? All their terms have expired. Do they automatically take a forever position on this committee? Some of them, from two thousand nine to two thousand fourteen, what's that, five years? Is that enough? Can someone else have a shot at it? And wouldn't it be wise to maybe have a developer on the committee? Someone who is on the other end of the spectrum? So I would encourage the board to mix things up a little bit here. And also, too, the Planning and Zoning has one, two meetings per month. The Design Review Committee only has one meeting per month. You have to go to the Design Review Committee before you can go to Planning and Zoning. The Design Review Committee likes you to come more than once. They want you to come first to discuss concepts, okay? And then, after they discuss concepts and the Design Review Committee gives you all the input, then you come back again to make a presentation, and even then, most likely a third and even fourth time, you would have to go back before you get their blessing to bring the case before P and Z. This, this doesn't work because if a developer is trying to develop something, first he has to go to an architect to get a concept. So he's spending money to get a concept from an architect, not, they're not drawing these plans on an applicant. They're getting them from a professional architect. So now they agree before ten architects that rip it apart, and then they have to go back and redesign it, and then hopefully a second time, these ten architects will agree with the architect that was brought forward. It's insane. It's insane. At least if everything was synced up with the P and Z, where you would go to the, go to the Design Review Committee and then go to P and Z, things could move forward. So at least they would have to meet more than once a month. And if they wanna have preliminary meetings, they should meet four times a month to catch up with the P and Z meetings so that things could be accomplished and get done. It's a truly ineffective, this DDR, I was at that meeting, they came there and made a beautiful presentation on the, on their design. Immediately after that preliminary, all these architects said, "Well gee, can you make the peak a little steeper? Can you put a column there? Can you make the glass a little bit better? What about that color? That color really doesn't look good." And sent this architect from New York City, I believe who works on the Empire State Building, drove here to make this presentation for this board and tell that architect how to design a building. It, it doesn't make any sense. As a matter of fact, at the end of the meeting, I asked one of, one of the members there, I said, "If you had to make a decision tonight," it's not on there, "if you had to make a decision tonight, would you approve that design?" And he said, "Yeah, probably." I said, "Then why are you giving them a hard time for?" He said, "No, we can make it better, try to make it better." I mean, that's counterproductive. It's counterproductive. There needs some rethinking and revamping of this Design Review Committee. One of my, one of my first recommendations is you don't need ten people there. Five would be plenty. And a mix, not only of architects, I'm not saying we shouldn't have an architect or a landscape architect, but one of one is enough. You don't need ten architects on there. It's just a logjam, and there's a perfect example of it with the DDR application up at the Rock Pop. There was nothing wrong with their presentation, but yet they were forced to go back two, three, four times to get their blessing for it before we come to this committee. Those are my thoughts on the Design Review.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate that.
Well, I want to think that, no matter what, they have no legal jurisdiction to any point, and you know this, Mr. Nachter, that you could say, "You know what? With or without your blessing, we're going into zoning." I mean, that's, that's basically what you have to do. And I agree everything you said, a hundred percent.
And they won't, I don't know if George could verify that, but they won't allow us to go to P and Z without first going to Design Review?
No, you have to go to Design Review once, but even if they say, "We're not, or we're not ready to approve," why don't you come to the second meeting and say, "You know what? We're not gonna go, I'm gonna, we're gonna, without your approval and blessing, we're gonna go ahead to P and Z." That, I believe, is one hundred percent in any developer's right. You don't, 'cause they have no legal jurisdiction.
Right.
You do have to go to the initial meeting before P and Z, but you don't, I don't believe you have to go to a second or a third. It would be without their, without their approval.
We were issued a permit by this committee, and that permit was based on approval from the Design Review Committee. You guys put the condition on the permit.
Well, we do from, we do from time to time approve things that the Design Review Committee did not approve. So developers can get around. You know, just maybe address a couple things you said. In the DDR application, they did go, they did present, and the architects did say, "Can you change this? Would you change that? We'd like to see this." DDR was very receptive, they worked hard, they came back right away, and they made significant changes which really improved, in my opinion, what was there. And I saw it with my eyes, I was in the second meeting with you. And I think that the net result of that particular development, the Rock Pop, will be a lot nicer because these people were there. The one thing that, that I looked at and I noticed, you know, these people, they're architects, they're professionals, they, they make a lot of money per hour, and these people are giving hours and hours and hours and hours every month to this town. They're giving it as a gift. And I understand that a developer might be feeling like they're running the gauntlet, that they have to meet their approval and they have to tweak here and they have to do that. All the time, you know, then you can step away and say, "I'm gonna go to P and Z without your approval." But, you know, at the meeting that I was at there, I think there were eight of them or nine of them, and assuming that they're only worth three hundred dollars an hour, they gave the town thousands of dollars' worth of labor at that meeting. And they do it at least once a month. And in that meeting, they held a special meeting to accommodate the applicant. So I know that they hold special meetings when there's a need. I, I agree that at times it's cumbersome, and I agree that at times it does get in the way of fast, rapid development, but nothing is perfect. There are problems with this, but overall, they are true benefits to the town, in my opinion. As far as their commissions being over or, you know, their appointments being done, you know, they're appointed by me.
Okay.
So I can, I can say they're already appointed and now they're appointed again. You know, they're, I really, I came into this thinking, "Ugh, these people, you know, they're in the way." But I've watched them work, I've watched them do their thing, and they really, in their hearts, wanna make a better town. And I really have to respect that. I really wanna make a better town, too, and I'm doing what I can do. I don't have the skills they have.
Why don't we, why don't we just let them design our projects, then? I'll bring a project in, let them design it. Because I'm gonna, then I can make changes on their design.
Well, you're, you know, you could do that, they're not gonna do it for you.
Well, I'm paying an architect to come in. I'm paying a big money to come in for these other architects to change the design. There's gotta be some kind of rules. If they have an architectural, they wanna get together and say, "Look, this is, we only want windows that are this shape or this size. We want mullions, we want certain pilasters."
And I asked them...
If they want, if they wanna set some rules that we can follow, that's one thing, but for us to bring a design to them, for them to pick it apart, not because they wanna do it intentionally, because you have ten people of ten different visions of architecture. And I'm sure if you went into a room and you say, "Look, I want you guys to design an office building that's gonna go onto green," I guarantee you to get ten different designs.
And you're right, and I did ask them about that, and one of the things that they said is that if you have a book of design, then your town is gonna be designed out of that book. One of the things we have in Guilford is a lot of diversity of architecture. We have buildings that look differently. Your, your building is a prime example, doesn't look like any other building in town. If there was a book, your building would not have been allowed because it would've had to have colonial features, or it would've had to have dental molding, or it would've had, whatever it is that they're talking about. So, you know, they offered to the town diversity, they, they really are trying to make it look better. It may not be perfect, and I know that sometimes it may annoy you, and I wish that it didn't. I wish that it was easy. But overall, I think that they do bring something to the table that I wish I could bring. I wish I had their ability to, to make things look beautiful. I don't. So...
As I understand it, you've just extended all of these members' appointments for another four years?
I did not do that.
Why?
I said I could do that.
Okay. I thought you said you could, you didn't.
I could do that.
Okay.
We'll review the table, see what I said. But I, I, you know, again, theirs is an art, not a science. It would be easy to, if it were a science, put in black and white, "All right, if this happens, you do that; if that happens, you do this." But they, they're artists, and they might be temperamental sometimes, but overall, the town benefits greatly from their input, just in the way the town appears. And what it comes down to, you know, 'cause it's not like I haven't thought about this, you know, you and I have spoken about this a number of times. And what it comes down to is who does the town really belong to? You know, you're a developer, you own a parcel, you should be able to put anything you want there. And then the other way of looking at it is, this is Guilford, it belongs to us collectively, you know? How far does our right to have a beautiful town that we want extend onto your property? And it's, it's tough, it's gray. You know, I wrestle with it. I've taken this question to people I know in my personal life, and I say, "Well, what do you think?" And, you know, it all comes down to, it's a tough, tough call. The state of Connecticut has vested certain authority in us because they want us to deal with it, they want us to wrestle with it. There are gonna be days when, you know, we're in a bad mood, we're gonna say, "You know what? I hate those people, I don't want them here anymore." And then there are gonna be other days when we say, "You know, this town wouldn't look half as great as it does without them." And it's part of sitting in these chairs, it's really hard, it's not so easy. A lot of internal struggle and a lot of wrestling all the time about what we do. And that's one of the things that, you know, a lot of people don't really get, they see us up here and they think we make these decisions and, you know, it's, it's easy. And I gotta tell you, you know, I know I speak for every one of us, we struggle, we lay awake at night worrying about this stuff and thinking about it. So don't, don't think that, you know, just cavalier, cavalierly say, "Oh, no, you're gonna do that." We struggle, and believe me, it's, it's, one of the hardest things I've ever had to do was sit here. So I appreciate you saying what you're saying, and I, I see what you're saying is true, but there's other truths that apply here. And I'm gonna stick with it for right now, but thank you very much for saying what you said.
I would also like to add, and I would definitely agree that I really think that this is something we're gonna continue with, and I really think that we should really look at how many people are on it, the diversity of the people on there. I think that should be taken very, very strongly into consideration. I really like that idea.
How do you wanna do that?
I, I think we could set some parameters, set some guidelines. I mean, it's a committee...
It's in your regulations. Your regulations tell you.
That we could...
Your regulations tell you who to have on the committee.
Right, and so maybe...
We'll get two seventy-three, one thirty-three. That's the purpose, and one thirty-four possible.
Right, I'm gonna take a look over at them. Okay. I mean, I really think, I like to take a look and see, but I really think that, very good point.
And I know that you're working on the food truck thing, but I'm gonna throw one more thing in, and if you could, if you could take a look at this and if you have any ideas on how we can move forward, absolutely, you know, every one of us here, you know, and also everyone in the audience, one of the things about this board is that we are responsive to everybody. So if you have ideas, and Frank, if you have ideas, please...
Yeah, definitely.
Throw them at us. And speaking of food trucks, what do you think?
Well, I got to meet with the Selectman Joe Mazza and our Economic Development Chair, Brian McLoane, just to look at some things on what do our regulations say, do we have any ordinances? So I found out a couple interesting, and we do have some ordinances already in place. They're very rudimentary at best. We found out, we had a lot of discussion that day about different, what we thought were regulations that are really non-existent. Technically, there's, there's about four regulations right now that are governing a food truck or a vendor or a peddler, 'cause they all kinda fall into the same, same definition here. And it's basically one thousand feet of property of a public school, they can't, they have to have, they have to have a license, they cannot, without the written permission of to have, they have to have a license, they cannot, without the written permission of the Board of Education, peddle any goods or foods near school property, things like that. And they have to be in a legal parking space and be vending away from traffic or not to impede pedestrians, but there's no set regulations about how long they can stay, they can park, technically, they can park on Town Road all day, all night, as long as they're not, said, impeding traffic, so that one hour thing that they'd have to move, there's no such thing written that we could find.
Right.
So I'm going to, I, we're going to meet again in a couple weeks, we had some other things going on, and we're going to check out Madison's regulations and things like that, just to, just to see where we're at.
Good.
I happen to be down at Jacob's Beach, and, you know, I noticed that every day, at about the same time, an ice cream truck comes down there and parks their truck for around 45 minutes and, you know, sits there.
Where does it park?
Right where the structures, adjacent to the playground where the pavilion structures are.
On Town Property?
That would be, right, it's Town Property.
So we have vending trucks parking on Town Property?
I believe she has a license to do it, I'm almost positive, I think, I went through, and there are some licenses that were pulled for 2014. You could also get fees, there's day, there's day fees, there's season fees, so, and then if it's a private event, I also witnessed two Taco Pacifico trucks, I believe you were referring to.
Yeah.
It was actually two days after we had that discussion--
Yep.
Both parked at Jacob's Beach.
So there are some--
There was definitely two there, but I did find out it was for a private event that was held by the school, they were doing lacrosse things, so they weren't actually selling to anybody, which is, I guess that's completely legal, so there's some interesting things, because they are out there, and, you know, there's a big article in the paper this week about the cannoli truck, and, I mean, there's definitely, I think we're going to, we're going to really investigate it.
Right, and, and, you know, we were talking about regulations and how they meet certain guidelines, and, you know, it's true, but my experience has been when these mobile vendors, and any mobile thing, tends to sometimes get a little sloppy, or maybe not follow the rules and regulations as closely as maybe we could hope. And it was yesterday that there was a terrible tragedy in Philadelphia where a propane tank exploded on one of these food trucks, and people were burned terribly. And hopefully, that'll never happen here, but, you know, it's not like there is no risk, you know, some risks that come to mind is if a kid is running across the street to get to it, and it's in traffic, something bad could happen. But having no regulations is really not the, not the way to go, having meaningful regulations, and I'm so glad you're working on it, so thank you so much, it's--
I think the biggest thing to take away is we do have town ordinances already in place, so there, that is something comforting, you just have to--